Sorry, we're not recording yet. Now, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Education meeting of September 21st, 2021. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and then a moment of silence. A moment of silence this evening is for Mary Kuit. She was a library aide at Jerusalem, White and Clay. And for Mr. Bob Rowe, he was one of our coaches. He was a P-Weed Coach at Facet at Clay Freshman Co., and he was the person who named our coin mascot. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mrs. Struth, may we have the roll call, please?
Certainly.
Mrs. Molnar, here. Mr. Sadek.
Present.
And Mr. Zabisky.
Yes.
Please be silent all personnel, personal electronic devices such as phones so we're not interrupted during the meeting. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as written, please?
So moved.
Got it.
Question?
Roll call.
Mr. Sadek?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yeah.
And Mrs. Molnar?
Yes.
We do give a recognition this evening.
Yeah, absolutely. So we know the school you're starting when we find out the special things that our students do. Mrs. Hughes sent me an email a couple of weeks ago about something unique and special that she was very excited about. The two students that she's involved with have heard some recognition that they have earned. And so obviously, not knowing as much of the background about this particular award, I asked Mrs. Hughes to come and maybe share a little bit of background of the awards that these two young ladies have won and then just kind of introduce each of them and share a little bit about their award. And then we'll take a couple of pictures. And Mrs. Hughes, thank you for being here.
The College Board, which administers the PSAT, SAT, and AP exams, recognizes academic excellence through its national recognition programs. Students selected for this prestigious honor can cite it on their college and scholarship applications. In turn, the colleges will use the listing of this honor as a way of identifying students who have excelled in their exams and in their coursework. I'm pleased to announce that two GT students from Clay, Kendall Rivera and Kylie Tadler, have been designated as the College Board National Rural and Small-Town Scholars based on their remarkable academic achievements and outstanding performance on the PSAT and AP exams. And Kendall has also been recognized as the College Board National Hispanic Scholar based on the same criteria. Sincere congratulations to both of these hard-working girls. You're going to hear more about them in the future. Kylie.
So normally, I have a certificate also from our Board of Education, which I will get to you afterwards. It just didn't get done, and I want to apologize for that going into this. But again, congratulations. We're so proud of both of you. And this is obviously something very unique and special. And you look great. Thank you so much for taking some time to come out tonight. And I know you both are very busy individuals. And let's get some pictures here real quick. And if you don't mind, you can just go on social media. Are you good with that? I have too many kids. Don't say no to that, so. Great. Well, congratulations and thank you. Feel free to go. We appreciate it. Thank you, girl.
Good job leading you on that.
Absolutely.
Okay, Mr. Gregory.
Yes, yes. Okay, so at this time, kind of knowing that we might have some guests here tonight, and also to continue our learning curve on this whole COVID situation that we're all experiencing, I reached out and we were fortunate to have some individuals join us to give a brief presentation on COVID and some of the things that surround masking and a few things. So I don't know if Mr. Rodsworth would like to maybe do an introduction. He is the president of Bay Park Hospital, Promedica, and he has two individuals with him that I think he'll introduce. And then they're going to be able to brief presentation.
Thank you so much. School Board, Ashel Sanamfan Rodsworth, the president of Promedica Bay Park Hospital here in Oregon, our community. And we were asked to just kind of come out and share the story and educate and tell what's going on. I have with us Paula Greve, who is our Metro Chief Nursing Officer, which includes our Promedica EBI Children's Hospital, and Dr. Bruce Barnett, who is a practicing pediatric specialist, also our Vice President of Medical Affairs at our Children's Hospital, and also a associate professor at the University of the Middle Medical Center. So they're here to kind of share some of our story. And we understand COVID brings some sensitivity to it, sometimes some emotion and passion. We're here just to kind of share the healthcare industry science. And that's what we are, your local healthcare industry organization. And as an anchor institution, you know, we're here just to kind of continue to educate. So but no further ado, I'll turn it over to our specialist here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to do a little tag team tonight. Paula has some great statistics that are very recent and very relevant. And I'm going to give what I believe is the best of the science that's out there. And as everybody said, this is not meant to be inflammatory. It is the point of view from the Children's Hospital, the point of view from the Ohio Children's Hospital Association. And we'll just kind of walk through it. And we'll be glad to stay and answer some questions or concerns if there's disagreements. So this is really the worst pandemic since 1918. In fact, this morning, while in the shower, I heard that we had just turned over 600-plus thousand people who died in the country. And so we're, I think, at 658, which was some magic number because that surpassed the number of these, what they called in 1918, the Spanish Blue Pandemic. We haven't really been having a pandemic. We have a yearly cycle where we lose patients due influenza and pneumonia, but we really haven't had a pandemic of this proportion since 1918. And if you think about it, we go back now 18 months. I think we all thought that we would be way over and done with it. I think after March, things looked really good. The numbers looked really, really good. And then all of a sudden, out of the kind of clear blue came the Delta variant, which is basically a different strain than the original strains of COVID. And we've now seen through experience that it's certainly more contagious. It's probably not any more virulent. In other words, not any more powerful, but it is much more spreadable than the previous three strains. It spreads easily amongst our children, their little reservoirs of virus particles. And then we end up, if we're following quarantine rules, with classes and teachers out, and then we move to school closure. The bigger part of that is, is that if you think about COVID and its effect on our kids, it's not just been the medical effect. It's not just been the pneumonias, or whether they've been in an ICU, or whether they've been on a ventilator. It's what it's done to their lost year of schooling in many respects. I have two absolutely fabulous young partners who are both mothers, and they both have children in school. And they would be the first to tell you, and I would certainly agree, that they are sensational doctors, but they would be the first to tell you that they're not nearly as good at being a teacher as they are a doctor. And that's because they don't have that training, that four years of college experience to be a teacher. And so when we are at home teaching our kids, although we did the very best we could across the country and in this district, like all the others in Northwest Ohio, they didn't get the educational experience last year that they got otherwise. We also know, and this is across the country and across the state of Ohio and in Northwest Ohio, we've certainly seen this huge spike in mental health with depression, anxiety, and suicide. Our mental health beds are exploded. We don't have enough mental health beds. And it started back up with the beginning of school. So this is kind of not just the medical side of it, but it's also the social side of it. Paula's going to help you through some of these statistics.
We thought would be really helpful for folks is just to see some of the statistics. And some of those are very close to us. So as we look at vaccination data here in Lucas County itself, you can see here on the screen what our vaccination rates look like. The percent of population of people that we know that have had at least one dose of COVID vaccine looks about 52.4%. If you look at the population of kids, those children aged 12 and up with at least one dose, we have about 61.9% of the kids. If you look at that percentage of people with 18 years and older who've had one dose, it jumps to 64%. And then if you see that age of 65 and greater, you think about early on in the pandemic, as it was so, so, so aggressive with our elder population, those 65 and older, at least one dose, it jumps up to 87.6%. You know, if you look at our Children's Hospital, we're fortunate enough to be one of the six Children's Hospitals in the state of Ohio. And we work regularly with those folks. We're on the Ohio Children's Hospital Association, and we're board members there as well. And so we've really been collectively across the state as Children's Hospital, been looking to tackle the approach to COVID as it relates to our children. This is some of our data. And I'll weave through some of the other Children's Hospital data as we chat. Inpatient volumes equal our winter levels. Generally speaking, in the Children's Hospital, our summer months are quieter with fewer admissions. This year, it's been the exact opposite. Starting about the second week in July, we began to see exceptionally high volumes. And we began to see exceptionally high volumes of respiratory illnesses, things like RSV, REV, other respiratory illnesses that come to kids, usually November, December, January, February into March. We were seeing those in July. That is unheard of for us. And we have continued to see that across the board. Our census remains very high in the Children's Hospital. We have over 100 kids on a daily basis, many of them with respiratory symptoms. I'll tell you, last week, for the first time, we had five admitted kids with COVID. That's a first for us in the duration of this journey. Our emergency centers, our urgent cares, our physician practices are overwhelmed, overwhelmed with volumes. If anybody here is part, I know we have some of our police officers, but part of our emergency response system for Lucas County for the first time ever in anybody's memory, last week, all of our Lucas County emergency departments were on EMS bypass at the same time. That has never happened before, purely volume-related, in the emergency department, in the inpatient census. We are overwhelmed. When you look at testing positivity rate, we put this together a few days ago, our test positivity rate, that's the number of kids, the percentage of our children who we have tested across Northwest Ohio through EBI Children's in our network, 12.7 of those that we tested were positive for COVID, markedly higher, the highest we have seen actually until right now. Right now, we're running about 14%. Why are we concerned about that? Roughly four weeks ago, our positivity rate was 8.4%. Four weeks prior to that, we were sitting at a positivity rate of about 3%. So markedly increasing numbers of kids that are actively infected with COVID. This is Lucas County data as a whole, as a whole, and this was from last week, just sharing, our testing positivity, all ages combined, was running about 14.24%. Total cases in the last seven days, when we put the slide together, new cases, 1,672. And the percent change of that number to the seven days prior was 33.38% higher. Marked changes. Again, as I said before, our EBI Children's Hospital is near total capacity, particularly for those RSV-type illnesses. I shared with you what COVID looked like for us. We are not alone in this journey with our local folks, but certainly across the state. We meet regularly, Dr. Barnett, and I meet every Tuesday morning with the leadership teams, clinical leadership teams of Nationwide, Cincinnati, Akron, Dayton, and UH Rainbow Babies. This is the same theme in every community in the state of Ohio. We have understood, we've used the world's words mildly terrifying. What's mildly terrifying for us is we haven't hit winter season yet. We haven't hit influenza season yet. To think about being at this capacity now, before true flu season hits, usually sometime mid-October-ish into the first of November, that's a little unsettling to all of us who are currently struggling today with much higher numbers than what we typically see at this time of the year. That's been a consistent theme for us, again, not just here locally, but across the state of Ohio and actually across the country. We also belong to the Children's Hospital Association, which is all of the Children's Hospitals in the country. And this has been definitely a theme that we have seen as we've moved forward.
So coronavirus, and some of this data will come from the CDC, I've kind of shortened it because they tend to be a little long-winded and their definitions go on and on and on. But coronavirus commonly spreads between people who are in close contact, and it spreads basically through respiratory droplets, which come from our nose and from our mouth and from coughing, when an infected person either coughs, talks, breathes. And there's clearly good evidence that shows that the droplets can remain suspended in the air and can travel up to six feet in distance. I think if you were to say, how do you prevent coronavirus from spreading? Vaccines, vaccines, vaccines. We talked early on about herd immunity, and that enough people in the community either have had it or have had vaccines. Somewhere around 75 to 80%, some viruses as low as 70%. It varies a little bit from virus to virus. But if you look at the data that Paula showed you, we're at 52% of our overall population immunized, and much smaller than another 18% that we would need, thank God, who've had the illness, to be anywhere near 70%. So please, please, please think about vaccines, washing your hands. Viruses don't like soap and water. They don't like the friction. They don't like it washed away. Cover your mouth. I guess that's the message we're talking about tonight more than anything, and practice social distancing. And there is, I would suggest to you, really good data. I think the other thing that we have to think about is, is that we were kind of taught early on or thought early on, that children don't really become as ill as adults, and therefore, we don't need to use prevention or take precautions. So there is some truth to the fact that our kids haven't had it as bad as adults. And even when they do get it, by and large, they do better because they don't have a lot of the chronic diseases that we as adults do. They don't have lung disease. They don't have heart disease. They don't have diabetes as bad. They don't have immune systems. They haven't had a lung or a heart or whatever kind of transplant. And therefore, they do well and go home and everything's fine. But it's not like that. I can tell you that in the state of Ohio, we've had more than six or seven deaths in kids who are completely normal people. Okay? We've had kids who become what's known as long COVID or long haulers. Those are kids that have had problems, whether it's brain fog, whether it's a heart problem, whatever it is, that have lasted now, some of these kids, over a year, and they're completely debilitated. They will never go back to being normal. So I'm saying to you, we're not trying to say that it's as bad or as frequently as bad in kids, but this is really a relatively simple way that we can help our community, help each other. Masks were first used by surgeons in the late 1890s in Germany. That was the time that Pasteur's came up with the first thought about germs causing infections. Previous to that, people didn't even wash their hands before they went to take their appendix out. As you might guess, there was a lot more people who died from infections. I was able to find this picture, which shows a baseball game from the 1918 series. And obviously, you can see the mask on that young man. PubMed, I'm going to talk about for a second. So PubMed is this website that we as physicians use. That's where anything that's published in the medical literature, which has been approved and vetted, gets published. You have to have a whole process to get through an article for it to be published on PubMed. And since the beginning of the pandemic, there've been over 3,600 articles. And you can look this up. If you go to PubMed.com, it's right there. There's about 3,600. I just looked this up on Saturday. 3,600 articles published about COVID. And as you might guess, there's a huge number of them because of the controversy about masks or not masks. And they look at different kinds of masks. They look at the safety of masking. They look at the efficacy of masking, and the differences in the different kinds of masks, from gaiters to tappers. Tappers are those big head things that they wear in the movies that give you a separate oxygen source. So there's some myths going on out there that we always try and talk about, at least in my office. I'm a lung doctor by training, and I do teach at the medical school, and I'm a full professor. So decreased fertility. The American College of Obstetrics and Gynecology says there is no data whatsoever to say that getting the shot or wearing a mask will decrease your fertility. There is no data from any of the over probably three or 400 articles I've read that would suggest that it would cause you to have infections. There is no data, this one I thought was the most bizarre, that you're going to get a liquid microchip installed from Bill Gates into your body, and they'll be able to track you. Well, I think if anybody's going to track you nowadays in the year 2021, it's all of us having a cellphone attached to our body would be the easier way to track you. And it does not, I'm a lung doctor, remember, it does not affect your oxygen or your carbon dioxide level. It's been supported and recommended that we mask and get shots. Why, and I could put another thirty here, but I'm going to, I give you all the initials. I'm just going to kind of go down that list. And these are strong recommendations. American Medical Association, the Society for Critical Care Medicine, the American Academy of Family Medicine, the American Academy of Pediatrics. That's the board-certified group for all of the best pediatricians in our country, and maybe if I was biased, I might say in the world. The American College of Obstetrics and Gynecology, the American Society of Infectious Disease, the American Society of Reproductive Medicine. They came out with a policy statement relative to decreasing your fertility, and they said that that's, you know, what. The Ohio State Medical Society, the American Thoracic Society, those are the chest and lung doctors of the world, American Board of Internal Medicine, oh, I got Society of Critical Care Medicine out there twice. That's a bad idea. Yeah, American Board of Surgery, the Center for Disease Control, the Ohio Children's Hospital Association, and the Ohio Hospital Association. Those are just the ones I do off the top of my head. I'm sure I could find more. But the bottom line is, I think most of the medical community is very, 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 the American Academy of Pediatrics, over 98.9% of their members are fully vaccinated. So I think that says something. And they've also signed a statement saying that they support masking. And then, this is my granddaughter. So I think I could easily tell you that I can't suggest stronger from my own personal opinion and 40 years' experience, and as the chief medical officer of Promedica EBI, that we really, really believe in masking. And I would be glad either later or now to, and Paula also, to answer any questions if you have any.
The other thing, can I just add one more thing? Because I think it's really important. We have tried to provide a consistent, consistent, science-based, medically-based approach through our Ohio Children's Hospital Association. We have some of the finest children's hospitals in the country, right here in the state of Ohio. And our consistent approach based on that has been very simple. Our goal is to keep kids in school, in person, in school, in person, five days a week, because of all of the benefits that go along with their educational development, right? Primarily educational development, that they help in their wellbeing, or their mental health, their social development. We could go on and on. We know to keep our kids in school, five days a week, in person, really, it's very basic things we need to do. If you are eligible to vaccinate, please do so. If your children are eligible to vaccinate, please do so. Masking, masking, masking is a simple, easy thing to do that protects your child, the people around them, the teachers, the administrators, and all of us, who are going to take care of all of the community when they become sick. And hand washing. That's really been the goal across the state of Ohio, based on the evidence of science and medicine from your children's hospitals. And that's really kind of where we would like to leave it from an end point, not to mention the beautiful picture of his granddaughter.
It's awesome. How old is she?
She's three.
Just a little one.
Yeah.
I have just a quick question here.
You crossed me an ice cream, though. That's a modeling fee.
So you had mentioned that just a couple of days ago, the system is getting overwhelmed with EMS and those types of things. Could, I don't know, I didn't really understand fully what is going on. Could you maybe just address that a little bit more, just from my own knowledge?
Yeah. So you know, as I mentioned, we've really been sitting, it's not just a Lucas County thing, right? It's a state thing. It's a national thing. Because volumes have been so high in general, yes, COVID is a part of that, a chunk of that, but in general, people are coming into our systems, sicker, staying with us longer. Our inpatient beds, and when I say our, I mean collectively communities, are markedly full, fuller than they've been in a very long time.
Okay.
In addition to that, our emergency department room beds are full. People are accessing here in a way in which they haven't in almost two years. And when that happens, when your beds are full on the inpatient side and your ED is overwhelmed, and every emergency department bay has a patient in it, and there's perhaps 50 more in the waiting room, you would do sometimes what's called going on EMS bypass. And that's when you say to the county, look, if a 911 call comes in and somebody's had a heart attack, a stroke, kick the thing, a critical event, our emergency department is overwhelmed. We don't have the resources to take that. And so those folks are diverted to other hospitals.
That's what's going on then, right now?
Right.
Okay.
So, but everybody was on, they were in at the same time.
Oh.
And the other thing we could comment about.
So there was nowhere to go, correct?
The other thing we could comment about is that if Mom is a nurse and her children are homesick with COVID, guess who isn't available to come to work at one of our county hospitals?
I don't want to induce panic, though, because I feel like I need to follow up with that.
Nor am I trying to do that.
Right, no, right. What happens when that, so it's never happened to us before. Believe it or not, we have a disaster plan for that. We plan for these kinds of things. The county goes on what we call Code Red Alert. And basically, what happens is, as a 911 call comes into the county, the county disperses it one at a time. And they'll say, Bay Park gets the first one, St. Charles gets the second one, St. V gets the third one, Toledo gets the fourth one, St. Luke's, right? It goes like that. You don't necessarily go to the closest one here to where you are. You don't necessarily go to the Children's Hospital if you're a child. You don't necessarily go to a chest pain center. You go to where the next available person in the queue is. So there is a method to care for that. I don't want to induce panic and think, oh, my gosh, we don't have, but it is very, as you can imagine, very.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions from the board before, I guess?
Thank you very much for taking the time to come in here and share some information that I think is enlightening for all of us. Thank you.
So my thought was, is that we will, it's okay with the board going, when we go into public participation, and if these folks would be willing to stick around if something should be a half hour up to a half hour. I'm not sure how many cards we have, maybe, maybe less. Six, so it'll be a little bit less. And then if there's something that comes up that maybe, something we hadn't heard, that you could maybe address that, would you be willing to stay maybe 20 minutes?
Sure.
If you do. Okay. Well, have a seat then. I appreciate it. What's that? No, go ahead and turn on the microphone if you could bring it, maybe on the other side of the, as the individuals come up and that we can.
What do you want?
Maybe in the center there. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's good. Thank you, Mrs. Molnar.
Okay, so moving on to item six, public participation at board meetings. All meetings of the board are open to the public. In order for the board to fulfill its obligation to complete the planned agenda in an effective and efficient fashion, a maximum of 30 minutes of public participation may be permitted at each meeting. Each person addressing the board shall give his or her name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person is allotted three minutes until the total time of 30 minutes is used. During that period, no person may speak twice until all who desire to speak have had the opportunity to do so. Persons desiring more time should follow the procedure of the board on a regular and be placed on a regular agenda. The period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the vote of the board. Please be advised that this meeting is being audiotaped and will be available on the district website. I also want to cite policy DBBH. The only topic... The only topic restriction is no speaker may discuss school personnel issues or any specific personality in a public meeting of the board. In other words, you may not name anyone who needs to give their speech. The first person I have tonight is Ms. Ruth Price.
Good evening. I'm in a home of, I have a throat surgery, and I have a very hard time talking. I hope you don't mind if I take...
No, absolutely not, absolutely.
And I would like to thank the people that spoke. Of the majority of us could not hear them.
Ruth, can you...
Oh, my, Ruth Price, 5255 Seaman Road. I'm going to start out with, I'm Ruth Price, and I'm 78 years old. My social security income is $20,460 a year. My school tax is $1,517.72. And it's with the new evaluation, it's going to go up $379.43. So right now, without the increase, it leaves me a total of $18,942.28. My medical insurance, without what Medicare takes out, is $4,944 a year. Then I have house insurance, car insurance, electric, gas, water, food, medicine, et cetera. I know this doesn't mean much to you, but it cares a lot to me. I mean, it just, sometimes it's real struggle. But the school keeps spending, and you keep asking for more money. Now, my husband went to clay, my two children went to clay, my two grandchildren went to clay. And it's very difficult for me to understand why me, 78, we're hovering through generations from our family, have gone through school, that I have to lose that much money to your school. I know we have an older population out here, but it just seems like it's not fair. And also another thing that really disturbed me is...
Sorry, you just got just a couple more, couple more seconds if you want to.
Right. I was one of the people out in front, I had the flag, and we were very respectful. I can't say the same for the students. They like to put their middle finger up to it. And they didn't know we were there supporting them. But there is somebody that was 21 years old. His father was there. That boy could not write or read for some. And I know the school system has dropped writing some time ago. This boy was, oh, he's not a boy, and he wasn't the only one. But it was also a friend of ours. Ruth, I think it's sad that they reached that time in their life.
I'm sorry to disrupt you, but in town, so...
We'll be back. I think it's sad that our school is graduating children that are lacking that, and as I say, they were very intelligent people, but they just didn't have the teaching.
Yep.
He got a lot of scribbling, but he had to ask his mother to read it. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And I also want to say that I went to my doctor's last week, and I didn't have to wear a mask.
It'll be fine. Thank you, Ruth. And next is Mr. Eric Bench.
Hello, my name's Eric Bench, address is 353 South DeKalb Road. I'm here, apologize, I know you guys want us to wear masks, but that's the reason I'm here. I totally disagree with it. It's our right to choose. I know that you're here to supposedly take care of our kids and put their best interests in heart. Well, and I have a question for you. There's more kids that die in car accidents every year than there are of COVID. So how are you guys suggesting that we get our kids to school now? That's a question for you guys, because, because that's, that's a more serious problem.
Sure, I understand your analogy.
If we're so, if we are so worried about COVID, then why are we, why are we spending all these resources on that when more kids are dying of car accidents? I just, I don't understand the analogy of the thinking of where everyone's coming from. Can you answer me that?
I don't have to.
You don't have to, huh? That's, that's...
This is our time to listen to you.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, all right, okay. All righty. I got another question for you. How much money are you guys getting from masking our kids up?
Yes.
It's public, it's public knowledge, so you might as well just tell us.
You might want to rephrase the question. I don't understand it.
Okay, okay. How much money is the federal government giving you for masking up our kids?
I'm not aware of any money from masking up kids.
Okay.
I'm aware of federal government money that is coming to public school districts under the ESTR funds.
Yes, if you mask your kids up.
Has nothing to do with whether we mask our kids or not. I'm aware of that.
Okay. All right. All right, and then I have another question. When we were out here peacefully protesting, someone put on Facebook that we were harassing the kids, and that is a bunch of baloney. The Facebook page got taken off after people were calling the personnel on it. I think they also filed an apology. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Mr. Fred Lewis.
All right. Somebody probably likely to take my Packer mask off for other reasons, but I'll do it for clarity. My name is William Frederick Lewis. Nobody calls me Bill or they call me Fred. I live at 5120 Brown Road, and I'm a candidate for this distinguished board. And I thank the board and Mr. Gregory and Mrs. Rupp for an opportunity to speak here. So my ministry, shall we call it, at our church is to teach teenagers. So I get, they tell me all kinds of things about school. But let me sum it up in a group, because I don't have very long. Number one, they're scared. I, I was born. Why would you be scared? This is America. Because they think there's danger in their schools. That's why they're masked. That's what they think, it's a teenager, okay? Though I try to say, "People are doing the best they can to protect them." They say, "Well, if that's the case, why is there nobody wearing a mask at the football games?" We're standing, you always told us, but we're not wearing it. I don't doubt the science. I really don't. I don't doubt that we have a serious problem. I had it. COVID's no joke. We lost Cynical. He had it. No joke. 1918, my great-grandmother died of SARS flu. I got it. I got the risk. But I don't get, may I dare say, the hypocrisy.
Yep, yep.
All right? So with that said, I want to thank you. Because I came here to this community really just to get involved, just to serve. And I've been on a school board in Illinois, so I thought I could maybe help out here. But you made my job a lot easier by asking for masks on these students. I'm just letting you know, I'm on the doors. You guys should tell me you are too. You made my job a whole lot easier. Because it's not the masks, it's the choice, it's the hypocrisy. Thank you.
You're taking away our freedom.
Thank you, Miss, thank you, Mr. Lewis. And our next person is Eric Rice.
Thank you, board. I am Eric Rice, 231 North Teachout in Curtis. One of the main theories on which modern medicine is based is the germ theory, a theory that claims microorganisms, especially bacteria and viruses, invade and infect the body, thereby causing disease. This theory, which is usually attributed to Louis Pasteur in the early 1860s, underpins a large and very significant portion of medical practice. Without it, most modern medicine becomes redundant, which explains why the medical establishment refuses to recognize its fatal flaws. Retention of the theory is not unequivocal proof that it has not been fully established, and, or that it has been fully established and represents truth. Research conducted for the book, "What Really Makes You Ill: Why Everything You Thought You'd Do About Disease Is Wrong", led to the discovery that there is no evidence to support the assertions of the medical establishment with respect to the germ theory. The term "medical establishment" refers to all people, organizations, industries, and academic research institutions that practice, research, teach, promote, authorize, and support the system of modern medicine. It is a fundamental principle that the burden of proof lies with those who propose a theory. Yet in the case of germ theory, that proof does not exist. There is no original scientific evidence that definitively proves that the germ causes any specific infectious disease. Although this statement will be regarded as highly controversial and maybe outrageous, its veracity can be demonstrated. There are a number of sources that provide corroboration of the assertion that the germ theory lacks any original scientific proof. One of these is Dr. M. L. Lefferson, M.D., who in May 1911 gave a lecture in London in which he discussed his investigations had led him to the conclusion that the entire fabric of germ theory of disease rests upon assumptions which not only have not been proved, and which are incapable of proof. And many of them can be proved to be the reverse of truth. The basic one of these assumptions, only due to Pasteur, is the hypothesis that so-called infectious and contagious disorders are caused by germs. Dr. Beno Bele also exposed the lack of any scientific basis for the germ theory in his 1928 article published in the Journal of London Medical World. And he states, "I am prepared to maintain the scientific theories that are facts that in no single instance has it been conclusively proved that any microorganism is the specific cause of the disease. It is clear that evidence to support germ theory remained conspicuous by its absence many decades after it had been proposed by Louis Pasteur. However, the situation has not been rectified. The germ theory of disease remains unproven with overwhelming evidence to demonstrate that it also remains a fallacy. Despite the authority of nature and the assertions of the medical establishment that germs cause disease, there are no explanations for the mechanisms, excuse me, mechanisms by which organisms produce the wide variety of symptoms in varying degrees of intensity that are claimed to occur when a virus becomes quote-unquote affected. This represents an immense knowledge gap, although not the only one that has been discovered. It is claimed that germs multiply within the cells of a host and can precipitate an excess level of cell death. It is said to be an indicator of...
Second level.
"In the course of my studies and others, I have not been able to find any proven existence of disease-causing viruses anywhere", says a German doctor, Stefan Lanka. "My core purpose tonight, which cannot be overcome, is to show that people are being made to fear something that has never been proven to cause harm. And it's for this reason I urge everyone to understand that germ theory has no basis in real science. It is now time for the truth to prevail, and the germ theory can be recognized as a deadly fallacy that needs to be bashed to the dust beneath history." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. And our next person is Mr. Greg Bonnell. Greg?
Okay. Who's, who's? You're Greg?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh.
My hearing's not the greatest.
Oh, sorry about that.
I'm Greg Bonnell, 5401 Pickle Road, Oregon. First of all, I think I, I need to share with you my background. I worked in education for 40 years. I'm going to read, I'm sorry, I want to make sure I get through this.
Remember, you got three minutes.
Let me just talk, right? So I'm going to read it, so hopefully I get through it. "Worked for 40 years in education, 15 as an elementary teacher, 25 as a principal. Because of that career of service, it provided me with a wealth of credibility and a world of experience to address this topic. There's absolutely no viable or valuable reason for making our children wear masks. They are not, they are not affected by the virus as older people are because their immune system, our immune system as older people are weaker. The Lord provided this group, 25 years and younger, with the strongest immune system possible. Most will not acquire the flu. If they do, it'll pass quickly. They are not super-spreaders, the virus, as with older individuals. No one is going to die in this group. It's been said that they are more likely to get hit by lightning than die of COVID because the death rate is minuscule. Less than one-third of 1% will die of COVID. So from a health standpoint, why are you doing this? I wish we could have conversation, because nobody can understand why you're doing this. From an educational standpoint that I can speak to, the masks are a huge hindrance and detrimental to the learning and communication for both students, teachers, and staff members. How much time and effort is wasted by not hearing and not understanding? And therefore, learning is destroyed. In a classroom, facial expressions are vitally important. Really, in fact, in any, any situation in society, they're important. But especially in a school, student faces, teacher faces, bus driver faces, cafeteria faces. We truly understand what's being communicated. We really can't, we can't understand what's being communicated. And consider the multitude of, multitude of complications with smaller elementary children, where they're trying to manage and manipulate...
Greg, that's three minutes. That's three minutes, so we appreciate you, appreciate it.
But I just want to say, why again are we doing it? From a health standpoint, from an educational standpoint, destroying our classrooms, and if we're doing it for the adults, that's the wrong thing. The children come first. Children are our top priority.
Couldn't do any more.
Not be enough.
Couldn't do any more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonnell. We are to Robin Burnett.
Hello. My name is Robin Burnett, and I live at 446 South Ballinworth Road. And I, I agree with Ruth on her subject that we pay out too much money. We voted in, the last time we voted in the school board, and we, you said that you were going to take away the children's ban, the buses, a lot of threats that went out if we didn't pass this levy. But then you also said that you wouldn't be giving raises to the teachers, but yet all the teachers got raises. Teachers in our school make as much money as Perrysburg. Perrysburg has a higher level of income coming in than Oregon, Ohio. But that's not what my subject here is, is I'm concerned about the kids wearing masks. There is no such thing as any schools across our nation with a COVID outbreak in the schools, not one, and they don't need to wear masks. And not every school in, in Ohio is wearing masks. There's a lot of schools that are not forcing kids to wear masks. And there's no reason why our kids are being forced to wear masks in this school. Our school board, youth school board people hired the superintendent. You are the ones that chose and brought him in. And we are the ones that vote you in. And we have the ability to take you out and remove you from your position. And we expect you to do your job and to take care of our children. We don't want the 1619 project coming into our schools. We don't want critical race theory pushed on our school. We do not run through the campus. And Perrysburg calls it CQ, or socially-emotional learning. It's all the same, it's all critical race. We don't want it in our schools. We want...
You guys have taken away the right as parents to choose for our kids. And I'm not from here, but we're all getting together, and they're rising up. I don't care what you do. I don't care if you're wearing masks. I don't care if you get vaccinated. You do you. But quit taking away the right as parents to make the medical choices for our kids. We're done. We're done. My 16-year-old, I didn't have anything to say, I actually wasn't gonna speak tonight, but got a little fired up. My 16-year-old spoke last night, and she knocked out the part. I wish she was here with me tonight. We're done. The leadership overreach of boards of education all over this area, we're done. Quit it. Knock it off. You were not there when our kids were conceived, and you don't have any business here now. Quit it.
And our next card is Vivian Stoller.
Who do you think? I was not planning on speaking tonight, however, I'm vaccinated. My kids are vaccinated. Vivian Stoller, 11935, Rachel Road. My kids are vaccinated. They are not happy about wearing masks, however they are. They want to be in school, not at home, on a computer, in school. They have issues being at home without a teacher, without staff, without people to look after them every day and help them every day. As much as this whole no masking goes, nobody else wanted to teach their kids at home. I stand in a school every day and work in a school every day. I see every staff member trying their best, absolute best, to keep these kids going and moving and energized every day with a mask. The kids don't have a problem with a mask. You have a problem with the mask. These kids come every day. They know when to put the mask on, they know when to take the mask off. They have no problem doing it. I'm sorry, I didn't talk with you, so don't talk while I'm up. This is my time, not yours.
Then don't ask questions to us.
I'm not asking you questions. I'm telling you, the kids are fine. Kids do great every day. Thank you all for being here and thinking about the kids and not yourselves. I'm tired of parents sitting and complaining every day, day after day, about their kids, but they're not thinking what's gonna happen when their kids are sitting at home because all of our kids are in quarantine because they didn't wear masks. It is not fear. I seen it two weeks ago. We had tables full of kids. Out. Not the kids are back in school because they have masks on. You don't see it. I see it every day. They want to be there. Staff wants them there. Principals want them there. The board wants them there. You also want them there, just on your own terms. They have rules and regulations to go by also. It's not all about you. It's about a community working together to keep our kids in school, learning, moving forward.
Okay, is that the last card?
That's the last card.
Okay. So...
Mr. Gregory, may I just say one thing, please?
Sure.
My great-grandson is in kindergarten, and he goes to Northwood School. They do not mask.
Yeah, I don't think anyone here believes or knows or disagrees with the idea that some school districts don't have a mask requirement. I mean, I know the vast majority of what the Northwest Ohio school districts do and don't do. We talk every week, superintendents. We know what's going on within our schools. So I'm not naive to the choices that school districts have, but I heard a lot of choice word tonight. So districts have choices, so we made a choice along with many other school districts. And Lucas County urban areas are a little bit hit, a little bit heavier for some of the boroughs. But I'm not here, really. It has never been my policy to try to convince anybody to believe one way or another. I'm not going to. Getting into the middle of this debate anywhere, whether it's at a board meeting or in my office or out at a football game or whatever, is unwinnable. It just causes people to be divided even more in this country, let alone in our community. And so my job as superintendent is to do my best. I do my best. It's not always perfect. It's not always right, but I gotta live with myself at night. And that's one of the things I've learned throughout this whole experience, is at the end of the day, I'm not gonna make anywhere near anybody happy because you don't live my life. You don't see what I have to put a puzzle together to run a district, large or small. You don't live it. You don't have to live it. I do, and I accept that responsibility, and I enjoy that responsibility because I walk around these hallways every day. You all don't. I see what goes on in these classrooms. I understand that people don't always like what happens in schools. There are some people out there that, right now, are having a movement to eliminate all rules from schools. Let's just eliminate rules. Well, it doesn't work that way in the United States of America, and it doesn't work that way in schools. So our job is to keep kids in school, plain and simple. I've said that in every communication I've put out since the beginning of this. The goal is to keep kids in school. We need them here to run the economy, for people to go to work. Working with all the agencies that we have to work with, one of the requirements is that we mask because we don't have to quarantine as much, so we're following that. Again, I didn't debate, and I'm not even trying to convince you. And I also heard, and I'm seeing it now from people in the back, that somehow this is all about money. Well, believe what you want. Again, I'm not here to convince you one way or another, but if it was all about money, then every single school district in Ohio would be doing it. So that's all I'm gonna say. I'm not gonna get into debate with anybody. Does the board have anything, or are professionals here from medical, if you have anything that you heard that maybe you feel you'd like to address? Because I don't feel right now I think there's anything that, I mean, obviously, the list that was presented today about medical professionals, and I hear often, follow the science, but I hear it from people that agree with masks, and I hear it from people who disagree with masks, follow the science. So apparently, there's a lot of different sciences out there. So I guess picking and choosing which science is the right science, I don't know yet. But right now, I do know that the professionals that I interact with every single day through the health departments and the experts that I rely on recommend to do what we're doing. So we're gonna keep loving the kids, we're gonna keep providing them, we're gonna keep getting them graduated and getting them prepared for life. That's all we can do. This is a bump in the road, folks. This isn't something that is permanent. I certainly hope not. And I do appreciate you all coming out, staying peaceful. I know it gets emotional, and I understand that. So I do appreciate that very, very much, and I think if it's okay with the board, we should probably just move on to the rest of the gentleman.
Mr. Gregory, did everybody get to speak?
They gave us a card, yes.
Again? Okay, great.
Yes.
Yes, everyone spoke. If you don't wanna stay for the business meeting, you're welcome to get up and leave now.
Can we ask medical people over there who is a big funder for all of this?
I don't think we use this trick. She doesn't have to ask you.
Okay, what was your question?
Who is the big sponsors and funders for, like, the American Academy of Pediatrics? Who's behind, like, funding this?
Yeah, doctor, I don't know if you can address that at all.
The American Academy of Pediatrics is a self-funded organization made up of its members, and we pay right around $1,000 a year to be a member of the American Academy of Pediatrics. You have to become board-certified first, and then you have to pay the dues. Okay? We do lots of things with lots of different illnesses. We've been very proactive in research for COVID and for children. So that's where the money comes from, from the studies that the American Academy of Pediatrics does. Now, there's a lot of studies done by other organizations besides the American Academy that involve children that we sometimes use in advocating a particular point of view. But as far as those studies that are sponsored by the American Academy of Pediatrics, that money comes from the doctors themselves. We have no vested interest. No one pays me to say, "Wear a mask."
The American Academy of Pediatrics members?
No, no, not the sponsors, the members. So we don't take money from a drug company to say antibiotic A is better than antibiotic B. We don't do that.
Is your American Academy of Pediatrics, is that local?
No, it's the United States.
It's all over the United States?
Yes. You can go to their website.
So anybody can be a member of them, correct?
Anybody can be a member if you are fully trained as a pediatrician. If you take the certifying examination, which is called a board examination, if you pass, and then you pay your yearly dues. The website is AAP.org if you wanna go look.
Did I understand you to say that your children's hospitals are filled with children?
Yes.
With COVID?
No, I didn't say that. What I said, and what Paula said, was is that we're filled... You want me to take this off just a second, yeah? Four and six feet away.
Yeah, take it off forever, Doc.
Okay? No, I'm not gonna take it off forever. Okay? So what we said was, is that children's hospitals' occupancy rate, the number of patients in the hospital, okay, goes up and down according to the season. In the summer is normally our lowest number of patients in the hospital because despite what some people believe, we do believe that infectious agents cause people to become ill, and we see many, many more viral illnesses in the winter than we do in the normal summer. Now, RSV, which is normally a winter virus that comes at the end of November or into the beginning of December and runs through March, and is particularly known for being very, very hard on little tiny babies, especially our newborns and our babies that come out of neonatal intensive care units because they were born early. It's a really, really nasty and fatal virus, and we lose kids every year from RSV. Now, what's crazy about it is last year, when everybody was at home, everybody was masked when they went to Myers or wherever your grocery shop, okay, was is that we had almost no RSV. Now, all of a sudden, out of the blue, in July, RSV comes like, oh my God, where did this come from? And it's like it's three times the number of RSV patients we would normally see in the worst of the winter.
So you're saying we should shut down everybody, shut down everything, everybody stay home, in order to avoid... What percentage of people would this be that would die these infections compared to the rest of our country? We live in a free country. What percentage? We gotta look at the right perspective here.
So you're saying is, is as long as the number of babies who die is low, we don't have to worry about it?
I'm saying as opposed to shutting down our country is what you're trying to do.
I'm not trying to shut down any country.
No, you said here, when everybody was at home last year, and everybody stayed home, that the numbers went down.
Remember what I said at the very beginning of my talk, which was, we wanted you in school five days a week, and the best way we could keep you in school five days a week is to have masking so that we don't spread the virus. Okay? And it's not just...
They do.
And if they do, then the flu and it's over.
Okay, well, if they don't spread viruses, the last 40 years of my life have been wasted. I'm a lung doctor, for God's sake, okay? And that's what I do for a living. With all due respect, I think I understand a little bit about what I do.
And I appreciate that. What percentage of children die of this virus?
Of RSV?
One-third of 1%.
No, that's not correct.
That's what I've been over and over. Well, you can have your own science, is what you're...
Well, here's what I don't wanna do. Again, I don't wanna rehash your feelings versus his feelings.
I respect your opinions, sir.
Yeah, everyone. But is there any, like, I don't wanna get into bait questions, right? This is not what we're here to do tonight. We're not here to... These guys are here to support. Eric, do you have a question?
Has COVID disappeared during football games?
So let me address this for a second. Because just, real quick, Doc, so, well, because the decision of the football games versus indoors, it lives right here, right? It lives right here. It doesn't live there. So, again, let's go back to the premise of keeping kids in school, Eric, okay? Do you understand that part?
I totally understand.
Do you understand that part?
Keeping kids in school in the outdoor.
Correct. Correct. So what, and also I heard is that there's a low percentage of kids that actually spread the disease in school. Somebody did said that, and that's true. And, well, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth. What I'm trying to do is understand why the indoor versus the outdoor is a distinct difference. And there's a distinct difference because when you're outside, and again, I don't wanna get into the medicals, there's less of a chance to spread. One of the things I've said in so many of my communications is that somehow through all of this, my job is to find some level of balance, some level of balance, some kind of compromise or balance. And, well, there is, I could see how people could see how there's hypocrisy to it, but you don't have to work or make decisions under the same situations that I do for your company or whatever you do. So under the schools and what we need to do in order to keep kids in schools and to prevent kids from being too close and have the ability to spread, we are still quarantining and excluding kids today, even with masks, because of COVID. And so, but we're much less outside. We've made the compromise to take the risk that outside, we're gonna go ahead and not force our kids, our families, our people that enjoy these football games or sporting events because we know we can't just lock down the world, right? I did that. I totally do. But inside our schools, I'm just asking, and all our superintendents are asking, for patience while we watch this COVID Delta wave that is real, that is affecting our kids. I talked to the parents of positive COVID kids. I talked to their teachers. I talked to the nurses. It is happening every single day in our schools, with kindergarten through 12th grade. It is not not happening. We have positive COVID kids that are getting sick. Is it all of them? No. Is it whatever percentage you're trying to argue with? No. But every kid's important to us. Every single one-at-a-time kid is, all right? So the idea that a school district somehow is, has all the perfect answers isn't true, but we're doing our darndest and doing our best to try to educate all our kids with all these crazy variables. That's the best I can say it. So, doctor, did you wanna add to that?
No, I think...
I'm sorry, I cut you off, and I apologize for that.
I don't mean that, but I mean, I think everybody agrees that we want our kids at school.
Yes.
We want our kids taught by educational professionals, just like we don't wanna go to a doctor who got his certificate from a Mickey Mouse card, okay? So we want professional teachers. We want them in school. We want the social and the emotional part, along with the learning, to occur, and we believe, I believe, based on 40 years' experience in education and what I do for a living as an administrator at a children's hospital, is that the best chance, it's not perfect in any means, is to mask. Now, I understand that there are people who disagree, and I think it's been respectful to... infants compared to the rest of our country? We live in a free country. What percentage? We gotta write, look at the right perspective here.
So you're saying is, is it as long as the number of babies who die is low, we don't have to worry about it?
I'm saying as opposed to shutting down our country is what you're trying to do.
I'm not trying to shut down any country.
No, you said here, when everybody was at home last year, and everybody stayed home, that the numbers went down.
Remember what I said at the very beginning of my talk, which was, we wanted you in school five days a week, and the best way we could keep you in school five days a week is to have masking so that we don't spread the virus. Okay?
They do spread the virus. They do.
And if they do, then the flu and it's over.
If they don't spread viruses, the last 40 years of my life have been wasted. I'm a lung doctor, for God's sake, okay? And that's what I do for a living. With all due respect, I think I understand a little bit about what I do.
And I appreciate that. What percentage of children die of this virus?
Of RSV?
One third of one percent.
No, that's not correct.
That's what I've been over and over. Well, you can have your own science, is what you're doing.
Well, here's what I don't want to do. Again, I don't want to rehash your feelings versus his feelings.
I respect your opinions, sir.
Yeah, everyone. But I, is there any, like, I don't want to get into bait questions, right? This is not what we're here to do tonight. We're not here, but these guys are here to support. Eric, do you have a question? So, so let me, let me address this for a second. Because just, real quick back up, and then, well, because the decision of football games versus indoors is, it lives right here, right? It lives right here. Doesn't live there. So, so again, let's go back to the premise of keeping kids in school, Eric, okay? Do you understand that part?
I totally understand.
Do you understand that part? Correct, correct. So what, and also I heard is that there's a low percentage of kids that actually spread the disease in school. Somebody did said that, and that's true. And, well, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth. What I'm trying to do is understand why the indoor versus the outdoor is a distinct difference. And there's a distinct difference because when you're outside, and again, I don't want to get into the medicals, there's less of a chance to spread. One of the things I've said in so many of my communications is that somehow through all of this, my job is to find some level of balance, some level of balance, some kind of compromise or balance. And, well, there is, I could see how, people could see how there's hypocrisy to it. But you don't have to work or make decisions under the same situations that I do for your company or whatever you do. So, under the schools and what we need to do in order to keep kids in schools and to prevent kids from being too close and have the ability to spread, we are still quarantining and excluding kids today, even with masks, because of COVID. And so, but we're much less. Outside, we've made the compromise to take the risk that outside, we're gonna go ahead and not force our kids, our families, our people that enjoy these football games or sporting events because we know we can't just lock down the world, right? I did that, I totally do. But inside our schools, I'm just asking, and all our superintendents are asking, for patience while we watch this COVID Delta wave that is real, that is affecting our kids. I talked to the parents of positive COVID kids. I talked to their teachers. I talked to the nurses. It is happening every single day in our schools with kindergarten through 12th grade. It is not not happening. We have positive COVID kids that are getting sick. Is it all of them? No. Is it whatever percentage you're trying to argue with? No. But every kid's important to us. Every single one at a time is, all right? So, the idea that a school district somehow is, has all the perfect answers isn't true, but we're doing our darndest and doing our best to try to educate all our kids with all these crazy variables. That's the best I can say. So, doctor, did you want to add to that?
No, I think...
I'm sorry, I cut you off, and I apologize for that.
I don't mean that. But I mean, I think everybody agrees that we want our kids at school.
Yes.
We want our kids taught by educational professionals, just like we don't want to go to a doctor who got his certificate from a Mickey Mouse card, okay? So, we want professional teachers. We want them in school. We want the social and the emotional part along with the learning to occur. And we believe, I believe, based on 40 years' experience and education and what I do for a living as an administrator at a children's hospital, is that the best chance, it's not perfect in any means, is to mask. Now, I understand that there are people who disagree, and I think it's been respectful tonight.
Absolutely.
So, that's why we have debate, and that's what makes our country the great country that it is. We don't say, you're a bad guy because you disagree with me. So, I actually wish we could do more and more of this. But I think we're all in it for the same reason, which is for the good of our kids, and that's at the bottom line. That's why we go to work every day.
I just have one question for you or a quick answer. You know, certainly, many organizations are having problems with staffing numbers. How are you guys, percentage-wise, with staffing, with your nurses, with your PR, and so forth, and others? You mentioned that there's, you know, more cases around, I understand that, and that you're certainly tasked, but is it, but just how, what is your staffing?
Yeah, so staffing and beds, I think, is probably what you're asking, right?
I'm sorry, again?
Staffing and beds. You're probably asking the question, right? How many patients do we have? And what's our staffing look like?
Oh, I don't know if you want to grab them. Is there a mic still over there? Maybe you said it's a little harder to hear than that.
Nobody ever tells me I'm not helping them.
Oh.
So I think what you might be asking me is, what do beds look like? How many patients do we have in beds? And what's our staffing look like? Staffing is a challenge every single day, right? Every single day, staffing is a challenge because we are sitting at a census on our inpatient units that we don't typically see. We do not see census at the rate that it is today. So, when you compound additional patients, which challenges like, our kids are being quarantined, sent home, our nurses, doctors, respiratory therapists, EDS workers are home with their kids because they can't come to work because their kids can't be unattended. It's a, it adds to the challenge, right? It's complex. It's complicated. So we do what we think is best to keep our kids in school in person five days a week, and that will, that will impact our availability to staff.
As a follow-on to that, when you, I've never worked in a hospital, so this is a point of education, right? When you say that your occupancy rate is at a particular percentage, are you measuring that against true physical beds, or is it based on staffing levels and the amount of patients that you could handle because you have care to give?
Great question. You should work in a hospital because it's complicated, too, and I really didn't want to get into the complicated piece of it, right? But it's like, you know, how many people could you put on the floor in your living room, right, in a sleeping bag? Those are probably what licensed beds look like. What you staff is what your typical census is.
So is, when you report like an occupancy level that's sky high or new level for a season, is that occupancy level based on how many people could literally be put in bed? Did you just have to do the best you could and line up in your living room? Or is it based on those who provide care?
We report in two ways. Typically, we report by surge planning. So if there's a true crisis and a plane goes down and we get 200 people that come to us, where could we put sleeping bags on the floor? And then there's staff census, what we can staff from a bed perspective. We try to speak to the staff bed perspective because you could bring 200 extra people in, but who's gonna take care of them? So it gets complicated, and I know that. But that's how we generally try to speak to is, what can we physically staff?
But if I heard of someone like you give a session somewhere else, and I was thinking about the information, and they use the term occupancy rate, they would be referring to the staff typically speaking, if they know what to talk.
Typically speaking, we actually had this conversation this morning at the Ohio Children's Hospital Association call. So when we report out to the Ohio Department of Health, we really report in two ways. What can we surge to, again, if that plane goes down? But what is really our staff bed capability? What can we physically care for?
And at the, at the end of the day, you have to say, we can't have 800 beds with 200 of them filled every day and staff for 800 for the one COVID event that happens every, I don't know, hopefully never again. So it's, it's all about...
Yeah. Complicated, for sure.
And the, and the world we live in is difficult, and it's difficult for our staff. And we've been in, in COVID mode for 18 months, and so we have some very tired people.
All right, let's take two more questions, and then we're gonna let the, if that's okay, guys, just two more, and then we'll, we'll move on with our reading. The gentleman in the back.
Does anything being taught as far as immunity, how to build your immune system, how to improve your immune system? You wanna take my face away and mask my face, and you take away all the immunities that I grew up with by eating dirt and playing in the garbage can. You, you either get sick as a child, or you're gonna die as an adult because you never got sick as a child.
Okay, so I'm not sure if that's a question or a comment, but, yep.
I have one question.
Yep.
So, if COVID germs get on this mask, can it be transmitted to the people, or does this mask totally destroy the COVID if it gets on the mask?
Outside of you?
So if I have COVID right now, can I blow COVID through this mask?
No. So if you have COVID and you get it on your mask, and then you touch your mask, then you touch that microphone, then 10 other people touch that microphone, and then touch their mask? How, how is that? Does that, the mask actually just terminates the COVID?
No.
No?
No, no one ever said that.
I'm just asking.
So, this is the best thing we have?
Because that's what my kids do all day long, is touch their mask.
This is the best thing we have. We want to put everybody in tappers.
Touch the microphone.
Okay, the tapper is the big helmet-looking thing with the self, you know, contain, huh?
It helps you mentally?
No, no, it doesn't help you mentally. Okay? If you want to self-contain somebody, okay?
Self-contain them, okay.
You, you put them in ice...
So they, they pop into this mask, they have COVID, and then they go like this, to do something, take a drink of their water, do anything, and then they touch something else, and then you touch it, how does that stop?
No, it doesn't. And it, wait a second.
That's all I want to know.
If you want half the answer, I can give you half the answer.
So, that's okay. Listen, I appreciate it.
Just one, just one question.
Now, it's just one, and then it's just one, and it's just one. Last question. All right.
So, since there are so many people that, that don't want their kids with masks, okay, and then we have people that want their kids to be masks, why can't you take to school and put the kids that masked in one classroom and the unmasked in another?
We don't want that.
Unless they have our choice.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's, that's a very difficult question. We have one more, but it's unique because it's from a student. So I'll take that, from a student in the back.
If all your kids carry someone's mask, but you need to say, where are they?
At home. They're little.
We have kindergartners that are touching themselves.
So I feel like I probably, I don't want to come in either. Because I'm willing to live with it if I can notice the wall and get a corner.
Exactly.
I got my, I have to, it's the worst thing in my life. The only thing I have in my corner is one of that.
I understand and respect what you want to do.
But it's our choice for our children.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Everybody, thank you again for coming out tonight and sharing your, your concerns. I mean, we, we hear you. I hear you. And, you know, we're all gonna get through this one way or another, and hopefully peacefully. So again, thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you for making...
I'll follow up with you. Oh, thank you.
Okay, moving on. Item seven, Treasuries Report. Each of you should have a report in your little folder. The major item tonight on the agenda for my report is that it's time to determine appropriation measures, and that's been presented. We will have adjustments to this measure as the year progresses, but our overall budget is $60 million, with $2.7 million encumbered as of last, the end of last fiscal year, leaving the current appropriation measure at $57.8 million. I thought I'd provide you, obviously, 80% of that budget is the general fund, which handles the majority of our educational services, students. The next would be, federal grants are never 8% of our budget, but with the ESRA money that has been provided by the federal government, that has increased up to 8% of our entire budget. And then the next is our bond fund, which is, of course, 5% of our budget, which is where we're paying off the buildings and the debt from our buildings. So I just want to give you an idea. There's a couple grants I did not include in our appropriation measure because they haven't been approved by ODE yet, and they're kind of hanging there, and I, we will adjust this later. One is the American Recovery Plan IDPA, which are for special ed services of about $188,000. And then the third ESRA fund that has yet to be approved is $3.9 million. So they're not part of this, and obviously, as I said before, we'll be adjusting our budget as it becomes necessary. But it is important to have a permanent budget in place before October 1st. So that's why we're asking for it tonight. Also, as was mentioned earlier, the Lucas County just had this triennial valuation update. It was a high. Obviously, every three years, there's either a triennial or an actual valuation of property values in the community. And I believe it's increased around 20%, 21%. The school, something people should be aware of, is there will be a rollback of the village that's actually taxed to individuals. School districts are only allowed to receive a dollar amount in Ohio that was originally voted on. The only exception is what we call inside village, but there will be a rollback. So I have not received the valuations finally from Lucas County. I won't see them till October, and then I'll have a better idea. But please remember, there is a rollback, no matter, you know, I understand people's concerns. So unless there are questions, I'd send the other reports out previously as I fumbled for them. Excuse me. But we're tracking, we're going to be changing it next month, our budget, our estimates, because we will have the final forecast update. I do not have the, the numbers yet from the new formula from the state. We're setting that out in October, just in time for the final forecast due October 31st. So, we'll, we'll have much more at the next board meeting. I just wanted to give you that update. Unless there are questions, that is my report tonight.
May I have a motion for the Treasuries Report, please?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or question? Roll call.
Mr. Savin?
Yes.
Mr. Zviski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulder?
Yes. Moving on to item eight, an executive session. Does anyone have a need more executives?
Not for me.
Thank you. Moving on to item nine, the consent agenda. Are there any items that the members of the board wish to pull from the regular meeting consent agenda? Here in none, may I have a motion to accept it, please?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savin?
Yes.
Mr. Zviski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulder?
Yes. Moving on to new business. Item 10, a disposal of equipment and materials. There is a toss-menter warming drawer, an upright warming cabinet, a welding tool bit sharpener, and an X, Excel tool cutter grinder, and 518 books. May I have a motion to dispose of those items, please?
Salute.
Seventh?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call. Mr. Savin?
Yes.
Mr. Zviski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulder?
Yes. Item B, transportation contracts. We need a motion to enter into transportation contracts with the following for the 21-22 school year. The Wrights family to the school for the arts, the Libro family to the school for the arts, the Smiths family to St. Francis De Sales, and the McDonald family to St. Ursula. This is according to law. We must do this. May I have a motion, please?
Salute.
Seventh?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savin?
Yes.
Mr. Zviski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulder?
Yes. Item C, donations. We need a motion to accept the following donations. Mr. Zviski donated $210 to the Clay High School cross-country team for breakfast and dinner. He donated a 55-inch TV to the Clay High School football team, and Mercy St. Charles donated school supplies to Star Elementary. May I have a motion to accept these, please?
A motion, thanks.
Seventh, I'll second, since Mr. Zviski's included. Any discussion?
Now, I'll just add, though, I, you know, obviously, Mr. Zviski donated some personal stuff there, and I'm sure these teams appreciate it very much. But what he does each year to help the Star Elementary donation is a big part, too, with St. Charles and their foundation, right? It's the, is it the St. Charles Foundation?
Mission Services.
Mission Services Foundation. And so, that's awesome. That's always a neat thing because you see all the pencils and paper and all the neat things they give the kids. So anyways, thank you very much. And Mercy, also, on behalf of the district.
Roll call, sorry.
Oh, Mr. Savin?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulder?
Yes.
And Mr. Zviski?
Yes.
Item D, item D concerns a pilot program for a junior high swim team. It's just a pilot. May I have a motion to approve that, please?
Salute.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Couple quick questions. So what's the cost of the district? Like, if it were to move forward as a...
Yeah, so there's, there's really two costs moving forward. One is the pool time rental that we, assuming this would be something the board would support, I, I've entered into agreement, we haven't paid anything, and it hasn't even been signed yet, but a pool agreement that we've had over several years with the Y to use their pool. But there'll be an increase because it'll be more pool time needed. And two, eventually, I'm assuming maybe even as soon as next spring, if the season goes well this year, the cost of a coach, a single coach, $1,500. I don't know exactly what it would be. We haven't put it in there. My thought is next month, if this is approved this month, is to bring you a, a small nominal fee for a coach. I've got a bunch of something like that, that, you know, because that's, I guess I'm modeling the junior high swim team kind after how we modeled the start of lacrosse. You kind of remember, we did a pilot program for a year or two, and we paid a, kind of a nominal coaching fee just to see if it would survive. And it did. And then we, we put that in line to remain up with our other coaching salaries at that time. So, you know, obviously, we'd have to have a minimum number. I don't know what that would be, but in my mind, it would be probably between 15 and 20, 10, 10 to 20. You know, it'd be a mixed team of girls and boys. We wouldn't host any home meets this year. They would all be somewhere else, and probably only a couple. And the season's very short. It's just November, December, compared to the, the varsity season, which goes from November to whenever the states are done, and in February, March.
So for the pilot program, right now, it's just the cost of a coach?
Yes.
And then, unlike lacrosse, it's probably minimal, if not equipment?
Yeah. The, I mean, other than the cost of the individual suits and things, and those would be the responsibility of the individual swimmers.
Any further discussion? Roll call. Mr. Savin?
Yes.
Mr. Zviski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulder?
Yes. Superintendent, two more.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Mulder. Well, I appreciate, appreciate, you know, the guests that came out tonight. I'm gonna talk about COVID here in just a second. I just got a couple of things. One, one is really exciting that I just learned of, and Mrs. Mulder just learned of, and maybe others, that, that the Clay athletic boosters received a generous donation of $10,000 from the Bowman Auto Group. Bowman Auto Group, sorry to spit that out, former Matthews Ford in Oregon. And part of their, this was actually last spring when it came our way, but I just became aware of it. I wanted to make sure that, that we hopefully acknowledge them, and I will, I know the boosters will be reaching out if they haven't already, and I will also be reaching out to the Bowman Group. From a Buck Bowman, he must be, I don't know if that individual, he must be the primary owner of the group. And so that was a wonderful thing. They get us going. They donated $200,000 to a number of, of groups around northwest Ohio to celebrate their 65th anniversary, and our athletic boosters were one of those. So, awesome. And thank you again to, to the support from our community. Just a quick, I guess, information about, in case people are wondering, for the public and for the board, about what homecoming might look like this year for a dance. Not so much the football game. The football game will go on. We'll do our normal parade that we do, where we start down at the Jay Schur Center. Each grade has a float, and then we drive it down, and they come into speeding. So that's all organized and ready to go. They asked me to be a driver once again this year, so I must have done something right over the last couple of years driving. But the homecoming dance has been the big discussion around the districts, or how are we gonna handle dances and those types of things. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna have a dance, and it's gonna be outside in Oak Street Grove, under that enormous pavilion that they have. And then there's a number of other things that you can open up, they have pavilions, and they have some covered tables, and they have just restrooms all outside. So the dance is gonna be on October 9th. So I just want to thank Mr. Jurisky. Obviously, there's more details to, to that that I'm sharing tonight. But we are gonna have a homecoming dance for our kids. The masks will be optional because it's outdoors. And again, the pavilion is big enough that we feel we can get them under... Uh, and, and again, the pavilion is big enough that we feel we can get them underneath in inclement weather, unless it's some kind of crazy windy night, but that's the risk we take right now.
And I'm going to interrupt you.
Yep, sure.
Board members, I got an invitation today for us to judge the floats.
Oh, absolutely. I forgot about that.
And they will let us know the time. Um, I don't have the time yet, but they'll let us know.
It's a big event. It's hard, it's hard work. You got the four, four or five floats, man. They're good every year.
But we have a checklist.
It's awesome. I appreciate the, the kids, the government involves the whole board and myself in it. And then lastly, just to give you a little bit of the COVID statistics that we have, as you know, if you've seen your, your email today, I, I put out an email this morning, uh, extending our mask requirement indoors. Um, I sent that out, uh, this morning because I was starting to get a lot more questions, obviously. Well, we, we had originally put the 24th as the date we were going to kind of look at this, which is the end of the week, uh, but there clearly is, is not enough evidence to change right now. COVID cases continue to go up. And I just want to give you the, the, the true statistics from within our district. And, uh, again, um, you can see the very first graph there where it says student positive with COVID cases and, and basically that's the upper left, the first graph. Each week starting, actually the first of August, to be honest with you, we had some kids that reported positives before we started school, so I just started it that way. But you see, we had a real big spike there the first two weeks of, uh, or the last week of August, first week of September, where we had, uh, 41 positive students and most of those were at the high school. Uh, so we had a huge spike. Uh, the next week we went, we dropped down to six, which was awesome. And so far that, that two number for this week was just yesterday. Now, I know that's up because I looked at it multiple times today and we had several positives today. And again, not all at the high school, these are spread around the entire district, uh, but I, but the vast majority are high school. Um, if you look at the graph right next to that, you can see the quarantine or exclusion projections, kind of like the number of kids that are out each week, okay? Whether they're out because they were, uh, positive or they were out because they were exposed to a positive or they were out because they were just sick, you know? Uh, you can see how that it's, it's climbing and we already had 30 as of yesterday. Again, that's a one day total, that 30. So that bar is going to continue to go up. Now, with that being said, any district, large district in Lucas County, if they have a number that's under 100, they're feeling very, very good about the, the numbers of quarantines or the exclusions that, that are happening because we were in the hundreds of hundreds of quarantines, uh, without masks. And I will tell you, the other Lucas County districts in Wood County that I talked to, those that started the mask requirement a little bit later have seen dramatic drop offs uh, in their exclusions and quarantines. Uh, again, we're still seeing positive, but the positives are coming from, uh, outside of school, which is the way we want to keep it, right? We don't, we can't control what happens, but what we can control is, is right within our, our walls and we're not seeing spread and kids have been in school from day one and I hope they'll be here the rest of the, uh, rest of the school year, certainly my intention. You can see the positive cases for adults. We have not had a major, uh, a major concern with our staffing. Thank goodness, we can't afford it. Uh, we need every staff member to be a part, to be here as much as they can. Uh, we're like everybody else, we're staffing is, is a big deal. Uh, we struggle with substitute bus drivers and, and even more so in the custodian, uh, area where we're, we're way down. So if anybody's looking to support the district, we could use your help being a, being a custodian for sure. And if you flip it over real quick, uh, just, just, these are just a couple of other stats that I, I wanted you to see because the top one there, to be honest with you, is really one of the key, um, data points that I am looking at every week. So every Tuesday, uh, I think it's Tuesdays, they come out, the Lucas County comes out with the cases per 100,000 and, and the governor, Duane, kind of started this whole way of thinking when he started his weekly, uh, televised, you know, conferences and he would share the, every county's cases per 100,000. And really it's just an easy data point to see if the, if the, uh, if COVID's going up or if it's coming down. It's just a number, but it's a, it's a number that means COVID continues to grow within your community or your county or goes down. You can see since July 29th how it has grown, right? I mean, it is almost a straight up shot from 52 cases back in the end of July per 100,000 all the way to this week to 574 cases per 100,000. So whether you agree, disagree or don't care, the number of COVID cases, uh, in Lucas County continues to grow. And you can see the chart that I have below is based on the most current data as of today by zip code. And so our zip code is, and it's certainly in the upper third, um, if, if not the higher, uh, the, at least the 43616, which is the majority of our residents. So it continues to be around. Um, we continue to deal with it every day, but I, I want to echo just one thing is that, uh, the, the young man kind of alluded to it, these, these kids have been unbelievably positive. I mean, we, I listen to my peers in some districts and some of the, uh, the, I guess, I don't know, arguments isn't the right word, but some of the defiance that, that has happened in some other places and we have not seen that. Now, are there some that, you know, the most we get usually is pulling up, right? You know, but that's everywhere and I totally understand it because wearing a mask is hard and not comfortable often, but we work with them, we provide masks, we're providing masks every day. So if kids forget theirs or, or have any issues, we're right there. Mr. Savage has prepared a whole bunch more masks, so we're good, um, in terms of being able to loan those out. So I don't know if there's any questions related to current COVID situation right now within our district. Mr. Zviski sends me that his hospital's data regularly, almost every week. And again, it, it mirrors the fact that COVID isn't going away right now. What I want to see is this bar graph hit a peak and start going down. When that starts going down, we still, we feel like it's at a comfortable level and maybe we start having some, some, some discussions. So, so thank you, Mrs. Mulder. And that's all I have.
Any questions from anyone? Okay, board business, anyone? Okay, board committee reports, finance.
True, great job of covering what we discussed in the meeting.
Good, thank you. Capital improvement, health and safety.
No report.
Policy and personnel, we've had no new policy, but I suspect we're going to.
Yes, it's, it's at time. Yep.
Uh, academic?
Uh, the academic committee met last week and we discussed a variety of things. Um, one of the things that we're doing with our children in grades two through eight, uh, we're just finished up, uh, diagnostic assessment of benchmark where our kids are. What we do know is that around this country, COVID and the shutdown and keeping the kids out of the classrooms has definitely impacted their, uh, learning ability and their retention ability over the last year and a half. And so this will give us a, a benchmark on where we are. This is based on the general curriculum, not necessarily on the state of Ohio. As far as the state report card, the report card will be released in October, next month. Uh, we have some preliminary numbers, uh, trend data that we're looking at, um, some, some, some things that, uh, that we've done very, very well and there's areas which we can improve upon, of course, and that we're working on those. Some of the bright spots, uh, here in our preliminary numbers, um, writing in grades three through, three through five has been very, very good. Um, fourth grade math at Jerusalem has been, uh, unbelievable. Fifth grade math district wide has been excellent as well. Fifth grade science has been very good. Um, we have areas that we want to work on and some of the areas that the administration and our great teachers are working on include, um, uh, math in grades three, four, six and a couple areas of the high school and eighth grade science as well. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Legislative is not here, student achievement, the liaison, no. Uh, board discussion, anything anyone wants to bring up? Executive session at the end, anyone?
For me.
No?